Welcome, everyone, to the City of International Falls Regular City Council Meeting for today, Monday, February 3rd, 2020. If you could please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item we have on our agenda this evening is to approve the agenda. There are two additions to the agenda that were not published in the newspaper. The first one would be under the consent agenda. It is authorizing a signature for a certificate of support for the City of Little Fork on their application to the USDA. And then the second one is to approve travel and training expenses for firefighters to attend the fire office and Training Officer School from February 7th through 9th in Alexandria, Minnesota. Your pleasure with the agenda.
Move to accept.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus to accept the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, four zero. Next, we have the minutes from the January 21st, 2020 meeting. Your approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion?
What is that?
We have a motion to accept by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second by Counselor Nelson? Any discussion, questions, concerns? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four zero. Next, we have a, um, a, excuse me. Next, we have our accounts payable. We do have an addendum to that for today with an additional $916.10. That's going to the Minnesota DNR claims for the water usage. Our transfers for this month are $212, I'm sorry, $221.63, and that's going to the general fund from the lodging tax fund. Then our accounts payable, City of International Falls Regular Claims, is $176,216.56. The DNR claim for water usage that I just mentioned, which is $916.10. Then our Airport Commission Claims of $92,021.50. There are no Phase 1 claims at this time for the terminal project. Phase 2 Terminal Project Claims of $72,403.40. Runway Reconstruction Project Phase 2 Claims of $59,910 even. And Runway Reconstruction Project Phase 3 Claims of $97,740 even. For a total of accounts payable or claims of $499,207.56. Your Chair would entertain a motion to accept the claims.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Any discussions, questions, concerns on the accounts payable or the transfers? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Hearing none, you'll have an opportunity again at the end of the meeting. Next, we'll go down to the consent agenda, and that is to approve the 2020 licenses renewals, which is John's Ice and Fire Taxi Van Service LLC and the Oprah Suite Catering Restaurant License and the Certificate of Support for the City of Little Fork Application to the USDA and the travel and training expenses for Alexandria, February 7th through 9th. Your pleasure with the consent agenda.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to new business. Our first, uh, our first item is to approve a commercial loan of $24,999 for MWJP Enterprises LTD, Doing Business as the Nomad, as submitted through Border State Bank. Sue Addison, please come on up.
The bank has approved a loan of $25,000 to, um, the owner of the MWJP Enterprises is Miles Brokaw. So we have approved a $25,000 loan for purposes of remodeling the former Knights Inn. And so we are requesting from the city, part of the commercial program, $24,999, which we will be servicing the loan. He purchased this property in November, paid for it in cash, so we will be placing a first mortgage on the real estate and the improvements. And the city will then hold a second position.
Does anyone have any questions for Sue or the city administrator regarding the commercial loan program?
I'm just glad somebody's using it.
I was gonna say the same thing.
Really? It's great.
Well, I can get more.
I think it's great.
Please do.
Please do.
Especially down Highway 53, as we're working on the 53 project this year.
Sure.
That would be great, as people have downtime to be able to fix their businesses as there's a lull in business.
Sounds great. I'm gonna check into that.
Great.
Any other questions?
No. So the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the commercial loan?
Still moved.
All right, we have a motion by Counselor Buller.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution approving the issuance of the healthcare facilities refunding revenue bonds by the Duluth Economic Development Authority to refinance a local project located in International Falls. Ken, you want to give us a little background on this one?
Thank you, Mayor. I can do that. Counsel, this is a request from the Freiburger Law Firm, and they represent the Duluth Economic Development Authority. And because of the attractive bond market right now where interest rates are very low, they're seeking to refund those bonds. And because a portion of the original bond issue was to finance improvements to the local essential health facility, they need to get our authorization through this draft resolution to allow the issuance of the bonds to refinance that project because there was a facility located in our city. So they've drafted a, and we've put it in our format, a draft resolution in your packet, and they're seeking approval of the city council to allow that refinancing to go forward.
The Chair would entertain a motion to accept or to adopt the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Nelson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Counselor Kraus. Discussion? So it's a good bond time right now, hey?
Absolutely.
Wow, that's neat. I believe we're doing the same thing in the EDA meeting this evening?
Actually, next Monday, we'll be doing the same thing, refinancing debt. And actually, in my conversations with the municipal advisor that we've engaged for our EDA is that the bond market is very attractive. In my conversation with him last Friday, he says the interest rates are at historic lows. There's a lot of demand for those bonds, and there's not a lot of supply out there. So he expects that to continue for a period of time. And he says that we're hitting the market just right through our refinancing next Monday.
Fantastic. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four zero. Next, we have a resolution approving 2020 wage adjustment for spare firefighter engineers. Chief Manasa, do you want to come up and discuss this?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm trying to recall which meeting this was actually discussed at, if it was a committee of whole?
HR.
HR meeting?
Yep.
Uh, we did talk about this, and the, so the impetus behind this is our spare firefighter engineers are part-time employees that are used to fill vacation, overtime, and sick leave of our full-time employees. They're non-contracted, and throughout time in history, they were given a wage that was equal to the low-end wage of the full-time engineers. So over time, what had happened is the wage that they used, along with union contracts and whatnot, kind of became an arbitrary number in space. So what we're trying to do is not equalize, make that number relevant again. So we're matching the low wage of the firefighter engineers without benefits. So that's where we're at. The wages, when set, they would be the bottom step of the full-time engineer.
So just to follow up to the conversation that happened at HR, which is one of the reasons why we went with it, is if someone was hired in, let's say, 2017, they were given the 2017 pay rate of the low-man firefighter engineer. But then someone gets hired the next year, they got a 2% raise. The person that has one year in service makes less than the person that gets hired the next year because they make the same as the low man on the totem pole, and so on and so forth. So as we hire more people, the people that have been there the longest in the spare capacity have the lowest wage. So this is a way of...
Yeah, and potentially, this could be a yearly thing, or if we set a fixed rate for a spare time, which, for the time being, this is what we're doing, and I guess more discussion to follow in following years, maybe, Mayor, is the right way to say that?
Yep.
But for now, for this year, that, those are the wages we're looking to set.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Chief Manasa? Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the pay wage?
Omo.
We have a motion by Counselor Nelson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Any other discussion? The only other thing that I had questioned at the HR meeting is I had asked why we would, since we have a bargaining unit, negotiate salaries and pay raises, why we would automatically put the, a spare engineer at that same pay rate that gets, uh, gets union representation. And the reason for it is to be able to get people that, to apply both for the job, and we do save money in the long run without having the health and benefits. So it did make sense through HR, and that's one of the reasons that we made the recommendation to come here today. So with no other discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution approving an application for a one-to-four day permit for on-sale license for Rotary Club of International Falls, March 13th through the 15th, 2020.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
Do we have a second? We have a second by Counselor Buller. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four zero. Next, we have a request from Miners Incorporated, Doing Business as Super One, for a cigarette license, restaurant license, 3-2 off-sale license effective February 1, 2020. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that license, or to approve that license. We have a motion by Counselor Nelson.
I'll second.
Do we have a second by Counselor Kraus? Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain. We have three for the motion, zero against, and one abstention. Next, we have the approval of the 2020 licenses for Howard Senex LLC, formerly the Fisherman, for a cigarette license, a restaurant license, and gasoline pumps. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those, or to approve those licenses. We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four zero. Next is to confirm an appointment to the Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communications Board. I have not appointed anybody at this point. I know Nathan has done that in the past on, for the fire hall, and I have been the representative in the past for the elected officials.
Alternate.
I believe you are the alternate.
The alternate.
And so is there anybody on the elected side that would want to? If not, Leon's not here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, although I agree that we could certainly hand this to Counselor Deech, these meetings are typically out of town during the day, so it's a difficult time to get to them, so I wouldn't feel comfortable appointing somebody that's not here. And with that being said, I also, I don't, I wouldn't be able to get away, I can't get away to get to these meetings. Otherwise, I would gladly take it. But it is during the day, and being, having a full-time job, it just doesn't, it just doesn't work out.
Chief Manasa, have you had anyone approach you that would be interested in, in being at one of these positions? Okay. Can we table this till the next meeting, and I will do some research? I'll reach out to Leon. Yeah, let's just table it.
Move to table.
Okay, we have a motion to table by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. We'll have this under old business at the next meeting. And that goes for eight as well, both omo. Next, we have approve hiring. Phew.
Kiana.
Kiana, Kiana Carlson, EMTB for the International Falls Ambulance Service. Chief Manasa?
It's like church.
Thank you again, Mayor. Yeah, for the council, I am requesting to add Kiana Carlson to our active ambulance roster. Kiana did submit an application, which is not included in your packet. I do have it with me right here. The background on this is Kiana had worked for the City of International Falls as a summer employee in the fire department several years ago. One thing we always try to encourage the summer employees is to look into the ambulance and see if they gauge any interest. She took her EMT class through us. Before she was able to finish that class, she moved to Wisconsin. She lived there for a few years. In her time being in Wisconsin, she finished an EMT class, got her national registry and her EMT license in Wisconsin. She has moved back to our area, transferred her license to a Minnesota license with national registry also, and has shown interest in being on our ambulance service, and I think she would be a good fit. So I'm requesting to place her on the active roster.
All right. Any questions for Chief Manasa? Okay. Chair would entertain a motion hiring Kiana Carlson for the EMTB position for the ambulance service.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion?
I think this is very cool. I actually, I think she was maybe just a grade or two below me, so this is super cool.
Yep, she, I'm, I shared with Administrator Anderson, I had no such issues of any kind with Kiana as a summer employee, but I will say I've noticed some good personal growth in her from the time she left to the time she came back. So I'm pretty excited to see her and see what she can do for us.
Nice to see somebody come back.
Absolutely.
This is good.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution approving the salary change for the interim Public Works Director. Chair would entertain a motion on, on the resolution.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller.
Take that, Ted.
Any discussion?
So I think today we talked about maybe amending the resolution, because what, in HR at our last meeting, we talked about restructuring with the retirement of Gary, and now Ted coming up in the interim, it may make sense to restructure all of that because there are some issues, we can say issues, with how it's running right now. But I would be of the position to amend the resolution to also include an appointment of Commissioner Brokaw to the Public Works Director position, with the understanding we are going to restructure. Is that fair?
Yeah. I, we're in discussion. Any other discussion? I, so the way that the HR meeting went, and this is actually a unique thing because we're kind of new at doing committee meetings. There was no motion that was made at the HR meeting that was clear and definite to what we wanted, and we left the meeting, and there were five people in the meeting, and as I understand it, all five of us got something different out of what we had discussed at that HR meeting. With that being said, one of the things that was discussed at length in the HR meeting is to restructure, restructure the Public Works Department, and we had asked for the interim Public Works Director Ted Brokaw to start working on that with us. And when we figure out where the structure is, that we would be comfortable, as an HR, appointing him to the Public Works Director position. Over the course of the last weekend, I've thought about that quite heavily, and one of the issues is you're asking somebody to restructure a department, and you're not going to know if he's going to be the one that takes that position. You're asking essentially an interim person to restructure an entire department of the city and then leave it up and hanging on whether or not he's going to be the person that leads that department moving forward. I did join Commissioner Brokaw today and Counselor Nelson as a walkthrough of the public works area, pretty much everywhere but the water plant. And he was showing us what, what needs to happen, what we need to do moving forward. And I, I've had conversations since that, just before this meeting, with Counselor Buller, as everyone else was already up here in the meeting. And there's concerns on how we restructure the department in a different way. So it's, uh, this is, this is a tough one, because I think if you're going to put someone in interim position, you're going to ask them to restructure a department. I think whoever's restructuring the department should be in charge of the department. However, that's where we're at right now. This is a conversation piece that we can have at this board. Counselor Buller, you had a point earlier.
Well, I think, I think to restructure right now, I think, while we're in this transition stage, would probably not be as effective as if we appointed Ted into the position and look at restructuring in maybe a couple of months or something, just to, just to give Ted a chance to, to do his, do his magic with it.
Mm-hmm.
And I can see there's concerns there, too. I mean, we can't ask him to restructure a department when he's not appointed to that position, and all of a sudden, here he is, he's got it restructured, and he's out of a job.
Restructured himself right out of a job.
I would be in favor of just giving him the, the wage, but just not do the appointment right now.
Okay. Joe, your thoughts?
I guess my thought is, it makes perfect sense that Commissioner Brokaw would step into this role, and we've appointed him as interim as such. But we've identified, or the Human Relations Committee, it's my understanding, has identified a number of issues that potentially need to be rectified. I think it would make sense to appoint him into the position and give him the opportunity to restructure as he sees fit, or as the committee sees fit, to create what it is we need and move into the, I mean, we're well into the 21st century, but to go forward, you know, former Director Skolman did a wonderful job, but I think, you know, you guys identified some areas that maybe needed some change, and this is, this gives us an opportunity to do so. So I'm very comfortable with Commissioner Brokaw. I think he does a great job, and I think he would be a great Public Works Director, and I see no reason why not to give it to him. It's just my opinion on the matter.
So at this point, we do have a motion on the floor to, to adopt the resolution. If there was any changes that we wanted to make to the resolution, it would have to be, there would have to be a, an amendment to the, to the resolution. Is there anyone that wants?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
So Counselor Buller, what are your, what are your thoughts of, just, so you're saying, if I'm understanding what you were saying, if I'm understanding it correctly, you were saying just kind of stay with the way we're at and just status quo?
No.
Or are you comfortable putting, taking the interim tag off and giving him the job and allowing him to restructure the department as he sees fit in conjunction with the Human Resources Committee and this body?
I just think we need to give Ted a chance to do the job for a while, and then look into, I mean, we could appoint him, I guess, I'm not afraid to go that route either, but I just think the restructuring right now that, that needs to be done, I think, is pretty out there and kind of vague right now, I think, in a little bit, and just to work with it, I guess, I got no problem with it.
So I would amend my previous motion to remove the interim tag from Commissioner Brokaw and make him the Public Works Director? Is that correct? Counselor Nelson?
Yeah, I'm just going through the words.
That's what I'm doing, too. As we, as we take a look at that, I spoke with the city administrator, and he had some, some thoughts as well. City administrator?
Mayor, counsel, my thought was just that it, I don't want to rush into a decision about how the department would be restructured either, and, you know, I have a great deal of confidence in the street commissioner serving as Public Works Director. But I think it's appropriate for the council to be comfortable with however we restructure it with input from him and his capacity as street water commissioner, and seeing how things operate, as well as just what you, as a relatively new council, what your thoughts are. And, you know, one of the, one of the decisions is the charter talks about having a city engineer, and I think we've agreed that that can be a consulting engineer. And I think in, in any case, we always need to have a consulting engineer hired to be available to assist on design work and inspection work when we need it. But I think there should still be a deliberate conversation about whether or not we want to have one on staff, and, or are we just comfortable with an interim, so I, or a hired consulting engineer? So I just think it'd be appropriate... So, I just think it'd be appropriate for the council to take some time and allow Ted some time to see how, get his feel for the position, and make some more formalized recommendations that can be aired through the HR committee with recommendations forthcoming to the committee of the whole. I don't think we have to rush into it, but whatever the council feels is appropriate. Of course, it's your city and your department, and we've talked about reviewing not just the Public Works Department, but others as well. So, I just want to make sure you make a thoughtful process and an informed one before you make a final decision.
And we did talk about the civil engineer, and we probably should maybe talk about it at a committee of the whole meeting, just to get everyone on the same page. Or it can just be brought up here, is what Commissioner Brokaw relayed to us is, we don't, he, and I agree with him, we don't believe we have the need for a civil engineer, our very own, just because we just, even if we did, he explained there's so many different particularized areas of engineering, that it would essentially be a civil engineer consulting with water or underground sewer engineer, or a road engineer. So, it didn't make sense. So, we did talk about that a little bit, and if, you know, I would invite him to say anything that he wants to. I'm comfortable moving forward with it this way, and to kind of further establish what we meant by the restructuring, is we're not recommending any restructuring at this point. That's something that we have to look into further, is we don't know what that looks like.
Please, I guess if, you know, any restructuring that's done, I think we should include the HR committee and the Public Works Committee together to do it.
Absolutely.
I think it's a need, I mean, there's a need for that, I think, but, and I am looking, I guess right now, I'm not looking for any restructuring right now until Ted really finds out what the job is. I mean, I know he knows what the job is, but I think he might be overwhelmed with it, I don't know.
Well, and I think if we go back to where we originally started the conversation of restructuring at the HR, is if we're appointing the street and water commissioner to the Public Works Director position, what we were worried about is, we didn't want to, Ted go into that position and then have a posting for street and water commissioner, have the next person go into that, and then the next person go, and fill all the positions going up. What we wanted to do is make sure that we have, whether it was in the interim position or in a finalized position, him to be able to assess the needs of the Public Works, be able to see where the best fit is for the people that we have, what future needs we need to be putting people into. But what we were, at least my concern at the HR level, was that immediately once we approved making him the Public Works Director, or putting someone else, that we're not filling all the seats, so that we have the exact same situation at the Public Works. That's what the initial concern was, moving forward, so.
I caught out of that was making him be that, is he wants to be that, right? You said we're making him that.
Well, he expressed interest.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
We have a motion and a second as written.
Correct.
And then I offered an amendment to said motion. So, that's where we're at with Counselor Nelson looking at the wording.
And I don't know that just removing interim makes it work.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
It does not?
I mean, if we have that understanding, and it's completely rewritten, but can we do that?
Right. I would think that we would just have to get a new resolution.
So, do we table it?
Well-
Well, pass this resolution, and then look at the new resolution in two weeks to remove the interim tag at whatever resolution that would-
We could do that.
Okay, so I'm going to withdraw my amendment and stick to the original, to the original motion.
And the nice piece about this, too, is if we do keep it the way it is, we do have a committee of the whole meeting where we can have that conversation next Monday. We can finalize any concerns that we have at the council, and then we can have it come back at our meeting after President's Day.
To put the proper motion, yeah.
So, I'm really glad that we had the conversation, though I think that that really opens up the discussion of where we're at and how we want to move forward, so. Without any other, I guess not without, any other discussion. Okay, hearing none, we will, the motion is to accept the resolution as written. Question?
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries, four zero.
And we will put it on the agenda, then, for the cow on Monday to come up with a resolution in coordination with HR and Public Works that we can then-
Yeah, we'll have that conversation.
Okay, perfect.
Yes. All right, any other business to come before us? All right, city administrator?
I have nothing, Mayor.
City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we have got, we've had three cases pending with regard to hazardous buildings in district court. We received the decisions on two of those from the judge, and we were successful, and copies of those have been forwarded to Ken and Betty. And then the third pending one, where we actually had a trial date, was with ICO, and they had removed the building, but there were still a few items, I think about three different items, that Kelly felt still needed to be done. They have since taken care of those, and so that case has been settled, with the exception, we had been requesting that they reimburse some of our costs, that we had to file the lawsuit and things. Now, they've not yet agreed to do that, and so I sent an email to their attorney this afternoon, and if they, we did agree in our settlement with the judge, that if we don't agree on those costs, then we'll just submit the matter in writing, each side submitting to the judge what we feel are appropriate costs, if any, and then the judge will make a decision. So, all of those three pending district court cases with regard to hazardous buildings are now concluded with the exception of costs. And on the other two, where we got the decision from the judge, we're entitled to costs, we just need to determine what those are and submit that to Judge Laduke with a request for the amount of cost we want to be awarded. So, that's going forward. I also, I met earlier today, had a long meeting with the county recorder to go over some of the issues that has caused the state not to approve the annexation that we voted on previously, and Ken and I are meeting in the morning, and then I'm going to get back with her with more information. So, I hope to be able to report some good progress on annexation two weeks from today at the next meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Department heads? Okay, reports of the mayor? I don't have anything today. Council committees, boards, and commissions? All right, anyone in the audience have anything to bring forward to the council? Well, that's sad. All right, with nothing else, in correspondence, you have the Visitors and Convention Bureau minutes, the Airport Commission meeting minutes, and the Minnesota Department of Health. Just as a reminder, we do have, we do have a committee of the whole meeting next week, and we, our next regular city council meeting is going to be on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020, at 5:30 due to the President's Day holiday. And if you want to stick around, there's going to be an EDA meeting. We are adjourned.